The Bible pinpoints that in the beginning there were seven churches. It was a period of time where we, like the present times, we do not have hundreds of churches and hundreds of people. Perhaps they might be churches. But what ratified, God ratified, were these seven churches? In Revelations chapters two and three, by the spirit of God, the state of these seven churches are pinpointed. I repeat. There might be other churches as well. The meaning is, they might have known God in diverse manners and they were ministered to God. But what haven't ratified and sent message are these seven churches? One, the churches of Ephesus. Next, the churches of Timor. Then churches of Pergamahs. In the church of Teatira. The church of Charles. Church of Philadelphia. Church of Laverdisha. But among the seven, there was one church which was full. Even among the seven churches, there was one church which was much appreciated by God and therefore the church I was talking about. Go home and read about the other six churches. The shortfalls of the other churches have been pointed. And also a request was placed that they had to repent. And if they fail to repent, a judgment will also pronounced for them. But only this church called Philadelphia was not accused, neither was it pronounced judgment. What does it signify? And there is a group of people who live a divine life even in the church. Among the seven churches, one church. To that church, the Lord says that "I will keep before you an open door." May God's holy name be glorified. A church which does not require independence because each and every day, it has been habitual to repent. So even if you try to find out some mistakes, you cannot find. And that was a church which had a good witness. So even after the spirit of God, they're doing a diligent search, it cannot find a fault in the church. What was the reason? Because the name of the church is Philadelphia. In the world, we also find that many churches are called by this name. Even certain cities, certain places are called after this name, Philadelphia. Even today, that place is there. That, the name of the place is Allah Sahib. So even today, that name is there, the meaning of the name is the city of God. But what is the exact meaning? What was the reason spirit of God has given this name to the church? We also have named for the church. What is the name of her church? What was the old name? What does it mean? So because it was started from Sri Lanka, the name was there. So it was after the death and resurrection of Jesus Christ on the 50th day, the Holy Spirit was sent and therefore it is called as the Pentecost. That's why we call the name as Pentecost for our church. In Velour, we have about thirty-six denominations. I bought a book and read. And there are thirty-six plus churches, denominations in Velour, there are little small churches which is beyond thirty-six. Is it not so? You can purchase that book and read. The entire history of Velour is there. And that book is named as War and On knees. So it is a book which describes the entire history of Velour and it is called as Murangal Yudham. If you read that book, you can find thirty-six denominations. So even today, we have churches in abundance. And there's a church called Two by Two. And there was a material called as Two by Two. So when we asked them why they have named the church like Two by Two, they said Jesus Christ sent disciples in two. When there was problem in Sri Lanka. So our churches, many places in Tamil Nadu were attacked. And because they called this as a Sri Lankan church. Consequently, we had lot of troubles, lot of commotion in India. Afterwards, the name was changed. So when we say the Pentecostal Mission in Tamil, many people think it's Tamil not the Pentecostal Mission. It's an English word. What does it mean? The Exact meaning of the English term, the Pentecostal Mission is that there is no other Pentecostal church other than this, this is the very Pentecostal church. So talking about the universe, it's mentioned as the sun, the moon and likewise, other people also commented saying that these people have taken the right name, that they are the Pentecostal Mission and there is no other denomination which can be called after that name. But why was it called as Philadelphia? What does it mean? Brotherly love. The church is something which is mingled among with brotherly love. After coming to the church, if you fail to have brotherly love, then the purpose with which God has brought you to this church is not fulfilled. We were somewhere else. He has brought us here. Why, what is the purpose God has brought us to this church is, we should have brotherly love? When you talk about Pentecostal Anointing. That is why we give more importance to anointing. Likewise, when you talk about church, brotherly love is mandatory. Where there is no brotherly love, the church cannot continue. Brotherly love is a very important experience, we should experience every day in our life. Brotherly love is very, very important. Because we are diverse kinds of people. We are born in different families. We speak different languages. We have been brought up in different cultures. And there are differences in our blood. But he makes all of us as one blood. Therefore, when we come here, there should not be any differences, partialities between us. When there will be ups and downs between us. So when there is differences among, or differences of opinion among people, brotherly love when it depletes, it happens. Hebrews thirteen, one says. Let brotherly love abide. What does it mean? And there should be brotherly love always in the church. And there should not be carnality mingled. We should not make room for divisions. It should not abide for some time and then wax away. What is the meaning of brotherly love? There should be an affection. Concerning this Romans twelve, ten, the spirit of God says. Be kindly affectionate one to another with brotherly love. So if you do not have a brotherly affection with others, you will just smile, you will say praise the Lord, but once the person departs your smile, immediately go off. Today, our love is artificial. The moment they see, they will give a broad smile, immediately it goes away. That is not brotherly love. So when you have brotherly love, you should be affectionate. The meaning is, if a brother is affected, you should feel as though you are affected. If he falls, you should have the sympathy that he has fallen down, you should not say that, "Oh, he is falling, that's okay," you should not go your way. Today, how many of us have the brotherly love? Today, many people have friendship, but it's not true friendship. Some people have brotherly love, but that is common. So they mingle based on their religion, based on their languages, based on their community, based on the place where they hail from and likewise, so after the meeting is over, you can find them forming groups like this. But these people even to go have food, they will grow in groups and have food, but there'll be some, about ten new souls would have come, they'll be wondering, they'll be clueless, not knowing how to meet the pastor and so. They've asked one person. You have come to this church for some time, but after that you are missing. He said. Not little time, but I came to your church for eight months. I've been attending churches continuously for eight months, but none of the workers, none of the believers, either old or young, none of them have enquired about me and why should I go to this church? Because nobody cares for me. So after the meeting is over, if you find someone new, the brothers should ask the brothers, "Who are you?" and we have to wish them and sisters should do likewise. Come, let's meet the pastor. So you have food and go. You are a member of this family. So you have to take care of the person to have food for them. So therefore, one person is acquainted to him. Next week, he'll come and meet you. And you can pray for them. This is how church will grow. So if you're ignorant of this and go your way, then they will just come and they will go as they like. And there should not be any hypocrisy in your love. First Peter, chapter one, verse twenty-two. This is a great subject. What is mentioned here? You should be unfeated in the love of brethren. What is the reason? Obeying the truth. Purifying your soul. You got to love one another with pure heart fervently. At no point in time should you mix poison with brotherly love. What is the other meaning? We should not encourage counter love. Love is something pure. Love is something connected to holiness. God is holy. So on the other side of the coin, you find God as love. In both of these, what is his nature? He is a consuming fire. Therefore, in everybody's love, carnality should not mingle. They are belonging to our tribe. They are my relatives. So they will say like this and they will become a relative itself. And later on, they will say that, "Will you give your son?" Because Pentecostal is gone like this, it has lost its strength. This is the reason why its magnanimity is gone. May God's holy name be glorified. Here, it is mentioned that your love should be unfeated. First Peter, chapter three, verse eight. So mentioning so many things like you should be very full, courteous, he says that you should have the love of brethren. You might have mercy. You might have compassion. So you might have. So you might have one mind. But among all these, you should have the love for brethren. So you should not be unfeated in your, you should be, you should not be feated in your love, there should not be deception in your love. What is Ephesians chapter one saying? Why has God chosen us even before the foundation of this world? That he is holy in love. We need holiness in love. That is why your love should be unfeated, it should abide. Loving one another. This is a commandment of God. You got to love others as you love yourself. Second Peter, chapter one, when we read. What does the seventh verse say? So if this mingles one with the other, the taste will be different. So will you eat only salt? So can you eat only sour? So when it is mixed in the right ratio, then there is a good taste. So that is why in second Peter, chapter one, verses five, six and seven, we see this. With boldness, you have to add wisdom. With wisdom, there should be temperance. With temperance, there should be patience. With patience, godliness. With godliness, brotherly kindness. With brotherly kindness, charity. This is one cooking. Is it not so? So when you boil the water, when it comes to a particular state of level, then you'll put everything one by one. So if you bring it up brightly, then the taste will be good. If you miss something or the other, then it's lost. One day, your husband asks the wife, "Please make me some halwa." She said, "I will make it, but just please purchase this book for me." And he bought the book. She beautifully made the halwa. And after everything was ready. She gave it to the husband. He kept it on the mouth. Afterwards, he could not open the mouth. So his mouth was stuck to the upper. And afterwards, he was not able to open the mouth up or down. He was struggling. Somehow, he managed to open. So he asked, the husband asked the wife, "So you said if you purchase the book, you will do everything?" and she said that, "Whatever is written in the book, I have done that." So then he asked, "Is it wrong in the book?" Okay, he went to the shop. He asked. So he asked, "What is this book?" We did, as per the instructions given in the book, but my mouth was stuck. He said. What is written there in the book? It says, "Just try cooking it," does it say that, "Try eating it?" So it says that, "Look at the tagline of the book," it says, "Try it," it does not say, "Try eating it." Likewise, people will cook in your house. So if they don't like you, they will just take a chance by that. At the same time. But even if you don't have salt, you will keep on eating it. At the same time, when you are hungry, you will eat whatever is given to you, but when you are not hungry, then you will find fault with each and everything. That is why in Tamil, they used to be saying that, "You have to eat food after you become hungry." In second Peter, chapter one, verse seven, go home and read, so when everything mingles in the right proportion, then the love of Christ comes in. It should be mixed in the right ratio. So when it comes in the right proportion, finally, it comes to the stage of being called the bride of Christ. May God's holy name be glorified. Here, the church, the spirit of God talks about the church. Why does the Lord keep an open door for this church? More than half of the people here have the question that, whichever I go, place I go, wherever, things, whatever, I put my hand into, the door is shut before me. And the Lord has a name. What is the name? The one that holds the keys of David. So he is the one that opened it that no one can shut and shut it that no one can open. We are worshiping such a kind of God today. It's then why, what is the reason that wherever we go, the doors are shut? So the truth behind this is denying. Today's message is do not deny. A child of God, after he takes up the Bible in his hand, until the time of his death, he should not deny. Even after a person getting married, until the death, point of death, he would say that, "This is my wife." Until the time of his death, it is the wife. So likewise, until the, from the time that you have taken the Bible in your hand, you should not deny. What is the nature of this church? So this is not a very strong church. This is not a church with strength like Samson or the Unicorn. Do you understand? Or it is not a man, a man like a gigantic figure like Goliath. What was the strength of the church? A little strength. But with the little strength that it had, it did not deny God, but laid down its life. The grace given to you might be little. The faith given to you might be small. Holiness given unto you might be very trivial. But you got to be faithful in the little what you have. The Lord might have given some conveniences to you a little bit. So whatever food you require. The Lord might have given, provided you maybe a thousand rupees more than your requirements. Or perhaps, you are a person struggling for even daily food. Why does the Lord lead the children in such a path? It is a test to check whether he is faithful in what is given. You got to pass this test. If you pass likewise. And he should make you a ruler upon many. Now we have become a ruler over many. When you are faithful in the many. So the Lord keeps his faith on you and gives more things, more responsibilities in your hand. And therefore, enjoying everything is a sign of fall. So because those churches just denied once. But many of us deny every moment. So denying is an experience of struggling. If a believer struggles. The meaning is, a spiritual standard is depleting. If a worker of God is denying. And he is heading downward in the ministry. So he places you in the balance and he weighs you, saying that, "Many, many take a luparsin," which means that, "Your weight and found wanting." Talking about this church. I know your words. However, you do not deny anything. I place before you an open door. No witchcraft, no devil, no magic, no spell of magic can stop it. So today, certain things we try to do. So what we do might appear good today, but tomorrow it's a failure. Perhaps it is opened by your endeavour or by your efforts and prayer, but if the Lord opens the door, no one else will shut it. Why? It was in hand. If he locks, he should only open. If he opens, he should only shut it. When you have such a God, why should you deny? Denying is becoming very habitual, very normal among the Christians. Peter, as long he was Peter, he did not deny. But the moment he became Simon, he started denying. Or in other words, once he denied, his name became. What was the old name of Peter? Simon. What does it mean by Simon? It's weed. And that was the nature of his old life, that was his name as well as his lifestyle. What does it mean? Read a bull rush is something which will move with the face of the wind, with the direction of the wind, if something has to happen this side, he will wave this side, if something has to happen the other side, you should go the other way. That is why when you keep. What did the Lord name him as? You are a stone. You are a rock. That is why he gave him the right name. So people are giving names today that they say it's an Arabic name, it's called a Greek name, so even they don't know the meaning of it in Tamil. So even Christians are also naming after the numer. So based on numerology, they want to keep the names like this. Our name should become a rock. So the meaning of the Lord, the Lord giving names to Peter as Kefaz and Patros, that is called Peter, the meaning is that he should be like a rock, a stone. When he was Peter, what was his statement? Matthew twenty-six, thirty-five. What was his word when he was Peter? What was his word when he was Peter? Lord, even if I have to die, I will die, Lord. That was the words of Peter. But what was the words of Simon? In Matthew's Gospel. Chapter 26, verse 17. See what his state is now. Concerning this in John. John, chapter 21. Now both the names are given, Simon, Peter. Earlier it was Simon. Until the time he denied, his name was Peter. After he denied, his name was. Simon, Peter, now it has come to a 50/50 state. In the same verse, his name has become. So dear, read. That's how it has become. Because when you deny, your life is changed. A test call, a denying will happen continuously in Christian life. We cannot say when this test will happen. It will keep on coming. This test of denying will come to a believer as well as a worker until the point of his death. I will explain more clearly. If you go to apply for a driving license. And they will ask you to get some certificate. So after you get the, provide the certificate, you will get the license. So they will give you about 20 years span. And once you become 40. Afterwards, they will give you only for 5 years validity. Why? You have to get a test certificate for your eyes. So as your age increases, the validity of the certificate will decrease because they will want to ensure that you have a proper eyesight to drive. Likewise. So you have to undergo a fitness test every time, every moment in the Christian life, even until the last moment, you have to undergo this test. Immediately you will say, why should the Lord permit this? It's not so. So through your eyes, you might appear to be a saint, but you have to find out what is shortfall in your life. Until the time that you fall sick, you can speak boldly about divine healing, but until when that sickness comes in, then that's the test of standing in faith. So why did the Lord afflict the people and lead them? And what do we read in Deuteronomy? The Lord says that to know your heart, that you might know yourself, I have led you in this path. Deuteronomy 8, 2. You should first of all understand what is weak in your heart and therefore you have to understand that I am weak in this aspect and I have to correct it. Matthew's Gospel, chapter 26, verse 34, the Lord very clearly says that your standard is very weak, not just once, but three times you will deny. The Lord pinpoints to him, saying that your Christian life is only in words, but it's not in strength. But in the next verse, he says that even if I have to die, I will not deny. But only God knows what was his standard. So that is why that he might understand, the Lord takes him to the path of denying. So some people, if you find, they will find fault with others, accuse others. There is no need anything. So when some person is sleeping during the message, he will say, pastor is speaking like this, but this person is sleeping. One person came and told me in YMCA meeting. So one person came at the YMCA meeting and told me. So one person came and sat by me and he was a believer. So from the time he came and sat down, he was only fidgeting with the phone, so I seeing him, I lost the presence of God. Likewise. So he will say that pastor is speaking like this and he will wake up the other person. The moment you tap, the spirit of slumber will come into you, the other person will be clear. Most of them are like this. Many are complaining about others' children, saying that this boy is standing there, he was speaking over phone and this girl was standing there and doing like this. So but later on, whatever they have spoken, reverses and come back to their own children. For about 1 hour and 45 minutes, he was preaching and all this 1 hour 45 minutes, he was just playing with the phone. Finally, when everyone was asked to stand up, at was that point in time, he put his phone in the pocket. That day, the subject was. So pastor, that day, I told that, so all your boundaries should have holiness. After hearing this, he cried for about 15 minutes. So I rejoice, saying that at least at this last moment, he was sanctified and he went with crying. So until that point of death, for you and me, the Lord will keep this test of denying, even the devil will conduct this test. So even if you score a 99 percentage, yet at least this one person will not fail, the devil will try to keep a test for that. But even if you have a little strength, you should not deny. If you deny, what will happen? You can deny here. But when you go and stand before the Lord in the presence of God, the Lord will deny you. Matthew 10, 33. So today, for whatever reason you might be denying, but still when you go to the kingdom of heaven, there the Son of God will deny you before the Father, saying, I do not know him, he is a worker of iniquity. And therefore, whatever activities of denial that you do in this earth will reflect directly in heaven. What does Saint Paul say about this? 2 Timothy. Chapter 2. The 12th verse. 2 Timothy 2, 12. If you deny him, he will also deny you. Therefore, in the aspect of denying, we should be very careful. You should not deny your parents. Do not deny the church. You should not deny the truth. So first of all, if you deny, the first thing that will happen to you is the son will deny you. Secondly. If you deny, you are called the liar. Thirdly, the Bible says if you deny, you are the antichrist. So come with the Bible, with pen and notebook. So if you are a person who can buy hard, you have to stand firm. 1st John, chapter 2, verses 22 and 23. What is mentioned there? If a man denies Christ, he is a liar. He that denies the son, he is antichrist. And who that denies the son, the father, he does not have the father. In these two verses, three accusations are made. When a person denies Lord Jesus Christ, he becomes a liar, he is called the antichrist and he does not have the father or the son. So what does it mean by denying? Failing to live according to the truth that you have heard, it's denying. So setting your life apart from the truth and the doctrine that you have heard and anointing that you have received, that is called as denial. Now see how Peter denies. So he is, a woman asked. Your speech is very much similar to the speech of the Galileans. Immediately he said. Who is that Galilean? I don't know that person. How can you say that? But the Lord brought him back to the ministry and gave him the ministry, that's a great marvel. Look at him. He made abrupt denial, saying that I do not know him at all. Next, another trial. There he said. I do not know this man. See how simply he has just thrown him away. Then again, the third one. Again, he says. I do not know. And there was once all the waiting for him. Immediately it grew. So historians say. So later on, Peter became a great minister of God. Of course, he was a great minister of God, so when people see, touch his shadow or touch him, immediately they are healed. But whenever he does the ministry of healing also, when he hears the cock crow, immediately he will be troubled. So every day morning, we have a cock crowing, that is alarm. Is it crowing? He was the one who was setting up the alarm, saying, Lord, wake me up early in the morning, I should pray, I should do this and that. But when the alarm goes, then they will say that, oh, get away devil. Three times in a night. On what day? So how many, how many days? How many days? Within 12 hours, it happened. So just calculate as 12 into 3 and 12 hours into 3 and how many years believers you were and just calculate. Just imagine. So today, how many of us deny likewise and carry the Bible along? So he that denies is a liar. He that denies is an antichrist. So he that denies, before the Father will deny. He that denies, does not have the father. When you read the fourth words of Jude. In the fourth words of Jude. What is mentioned about them that deny? They just topple the words of God. And they topple the grace. Who are they? They are ungodly. And they are the one who enter through the sideways. And they are in condemnation. These people deny God. So therefore, the one that denies, one who creeps in unawares and one who is ungodly, he is, he does not. Therefore, the Bible says. Do not deny. So let us consider, how many times have we denied in our life? When you deny, once again. We deny holiness. We deny righteousness. So when we deny, we also set to deliverance the sin. Acts of the Apostles, chapter 3, verses 13 and 14. So you have denied the holy and righteous one. Because you denied what happened. So a murderer is being delivered. What does it mean? So when you deny, then sin is delivered from you and it becomes very gigantic. Today, this denying, the process of denying. We got to understand this properly. So about the church, it is mentioned that because you have kept my word and not denied. So whenever you deny, you're denying his name. Or you are rejecting his name. You say that I do not know. So you do not know the truth? You do not know how you should keep the faith? You do not know how you should beat your wife? So you do not know that you should not commit mistake with others' wives? Even the CSA person knows. Do you not, do not know the 10 commandments? So only if we follow the 10 commandments, we are the right Pentecostal. So very clearly, it is mentioned about the 10 commandments. The reason is they are unable to follow. What is the reason? There is no law. So that is why when Christ came, he said that you love God, all these things shall be set free. What you do not know. So if I sit down, about 100 people will come forward to preach about denying, you'll say the pastor does not know this verse, but I will teach about this verse. So you are supposed to be teachers. You can speak in a moment. But. So but having known about denial, we are still denying. Yet being warned that he shall deny three times, he said, I will not deny, but went again and he come denied all three times. Do not turn the scriptures. Do not stern the word of God. 2nd Peter, chapter 2, when we read. It is mentioned about a group of people who deny God. And they would just topple the words of God. 2nd Peter, chapter 2, verse 1. If a person is heretic in his words, that means that he is denying. Do you understand? So when I got transferred from Chennai to Madurai. So but an anointed believer, he came to Madurai to visit me. So he was from a RC background. So there was one of his close litter who studied theology and he was just secured the degree and came out. And they also had ordained a feast for him.
एन आर वर्षो पासाइटर, अनाला अवरक एन्नदे गुरु पट्टमुड्डुकरा, चिन्न पाय्य
So of course, he was a young boy, but he has passed through the six years of studies and he has now secured the degree.
अंदा फंक्शनिंग अन्ग अटन्मनिते, नी नल्ला उलिय चिनुन, यंग पास्टर वाजावुन्नुन, एन्टा कुड्डुत्तांग
So after he was ordained, then he was brought to me, saying that if you have to do the ministry well, he had to be prayed of from my pastor and therefore he was brought to me.
अव्डक कोणिनार बेसिटन्ना
I was speaking to him for some time.
अल्पराध बुरिंजे, इवन पास्टर, इवन गुरुआइटन, एन्ना अवरुन द सभा
It's only then after discussion, I understood that if he becomes the leader of the church, what will happen to the church?
एन अव एन्ना सोल्ला रुम्छना कोणिनार तिल
Because after little time, he said.
बाइबिलमट्टुनाम बिलीपुनुनु इल्ल, डार्विन टियरी निंग सिंधिच्छ पारिंग
He said, "You should not believe only the Bible, but you should also contemplate Darwin's theory."
डार्विन टियरी नसोल्लदे
What does Darwin's theory say?
बाइबिल नसोल्लदे
What does the Bible say?
मन्मिल रुन्नु मनिषनाई, तनुडे सायर इन्बडी तनुडे रूबत इन्बडी उड्डाकिनार, इदु बाइबिल
What the Bible says is, "God created man out of the dust of the earth in his own image and likeness."
अब डार्विन टियरी नसोल्लदे
But what does Darwin's theory say?
कुरंगलारुन्दे मनिषवंदान
Man evolved from monkeys.
इदै अक्सर यान निंग वन्द सिंधिकमाट्टिकिंग याना
He's asked, saying, "What, why don't you contemplate this?"
एबडी आरसी चर्चलान नी इबडी पेसु यान काट
I asked, "Will you speak like this in the A R C church?"
ओर मासलाउनाल इबडी पेसमुडिमा
Can you speak in a mass like this?
पेसलामै अल्लून तप्पिल्य
He said, "I can speak, there's nothing wrong."
अड्डु टक्कन, एसु तन्नीर त्राचरसमा मात्नार्पर अदुक वन्दा
Then he said to that incident where Jesus Christ converted the water into wine.
एलार्न काल कलुनांगलिया, अंदा काल कलुनुकु काल्लुल्ला अडुके, एप्पडी मारिच्छे
Everybody was washing their feet.
अदन कालर डिफरेंटारुन, चिन्न मारी ओर मारी कोडोनु, निन काल कलुनु दान त्राचरसम अब अब्रिन सोना, एनक उन्नु पुरील
He gave a different interpretation.
आर वर्षो पडिच्छ मनलिलाली पोट्टा, इन्ना इबडी पनिस्तान
So he was comparing the dirty water where the feet were washed into the grape and into wine and therefore I was wondering what he had learnt all these six years.
परिंदु मूनुनाल कलुकुम्नाल ओर सैदी काट
So two or three days before I heard it.
अदर वेद पुरट्टुके सोल्ला नान
I'm just talking about these heresies or the stoning the word of God.
योबु सोन्नदे, कथर कुड्डुथार, कथर एडुथार
What Job said was, "The Lord gave and the Lord has taken away."
अंदा वसनत्तुकु मर्पु कुडुकराव
And he was refusing that word.
नापत्रण्डा मधिकारतलाई, आंडवरे, नान अरियामल पेसिविट्टै, अदानाला अदु तप्प
So forty
ओर पुरिंजे दान तेरिय
The forty second chapter
यार पिन्नाल वारिंगलाल, वारिंगलाल वारिंगलाल उकांदिते, अभी बादिर बाल्लन्या बाकुदा पाल्लुरिदा एन्सिपिट्टा ना, बिस्कट कुडुकले, इबडी बादिन निंग वन्द ब्रोजिनमेकडे
In the forty second chapter, Job says that unknowingly I have spoken and therefore he's relating this to that verse.
योबु इरण्डा मधिकारतलाई सोल्ला यारे, कथर कुड्डुथार, कथर एडुथार, कथुडे नामत्के, हाँ, स्तोत्रम
Job, chapter 2, Job says that the Lord has given, the Lord has taken away, praise be to the name of the Lord in the first chapter.
योबु वन्न इरवत्योन्डलाई सोल्ला यारे, कथर कुड्डुथार, कथर एडु आना नापत्रण्डा मधिकारतलाई, नान नीसन, यन वाय इपोत्तिकुडुकरे, नाम पेसन अलान तप्पुंगरार अदानाले, इदलान एन्नदे, मोपत्रण्डा मधिकारम ओर पेसन अदा अनैत्यम तावर अभिंगराम्बारिंग, वटन अदुक वर्तम विसिलेडिकरा, वर्ता, आ, कैद दरा, नम्म पास्टर सुपर पेस्टर नापात्ता, आ, इदुकु विसिलेडिकरान्ग अच्छा यारे, एदे, कथर कुड्डुथार, कथर एडुथार नर्कदे तप्पुन्न पायोबु उत्तुकंडार्ना, राइट, इदु पिन्नाल पोर सभा एबडी पोहो इबो कोलान्या एडुथिरान, कथर एडुथार नसोल्ला माटा, स्तोत्र एडुथार, कथर एडुथार नसोल्ला माटा, इदु विशास एडुथुन्दा जोल अब्रिन सोल्लो देवनुडे वसनत्ते अभी ट्रिपन्नरदे, यारादु दायु से द, अभी यारादु प्रैक्टिस पनिरारिंग
So they are just toppling the word of God, just like that, they are just relating the verses which Job spoke in the first chapter and the forty second chapter and saying that what Job said in the first chapter, he is disagreeing with his own statement and people are clapping hands for that and whistling also for that.
मुडिय पकादे, उलुकुलरुकर आवियान अरै पार, पर्तु सोल्ला, अवन्दा, अवन्दन्द मिलन जन्नाम बेसराई
So
अदे ओरे आविल उड़लो
So the same person having the same kind of spirit, he said, "Do not look at the hair, but look at the spirit of God inside."
ड्रेसोडा कलार बाकाद, पास्टर पोट्रुकर ड्रेस वन्द डिसेंट, अब अभी मिन्नुन अंदा लाइट काट्तमर्दन पोट्टुवारा, अदे वन्द निकिरांग इदै पारकारे, उलुकुलरुकर आवियान ओर कुडिय अच्छुरार्ना, अदे एप्पडी अच्छुरारे
So do not look at the garment he was wearing, because he was wearing glittery garments, shining garments but the Lord's spirit of God from inside, he's lifting up the banner.
इदु पात्त वडने अंग फ्लोरेसन्ड कलारलाउन्द्रुकदलान, ओरे विसिल ओरे कत्तु पास्टर निचिन्तारे नम्म केतम मारी प्रसंग मन्तारे
Looking at these people who are wearing fluorescent garments, they were very happy, saying that pastors preached according to our desire and therefore they were shouting and whistling.
एन्ना निज जिप्सी मारी कादुमाडुन, वाल्दुकुट्टे, कंट्रोल इलावु पोइट्रुकर, रकैसुकलाल विसिलेडिकर, अदे निन्ही ताम सरियान प्रसंग
The people having hair like gypsies, they were just whistling, saying that this is the right message today.
तावरु पुरीमान
Well, I would want it's wrong.
नम्म वसनंगलाई रम्बा करक्ता फॉलो पन्नो
We have to follow the words of God as it is.
इन्दिक नी पुरटिरलाल, समयत्त काट्तमर्ला, अलाहा पेसलांग
Today, you might topple the words as you like, according to the situation.
अम्मल अपनी कम्डियादे
But you cannot go and stand before the Lord.
अदान ओर तर सोनार, न्याय तिरिपला ओर तर उकारोचिकिते, आरु वर्षो तुक अनुक पंजायत पनिरुक्माटारे
So therefore
अंदा प्रेसन्सुकु पोन वडने, अवनुक तेरियो, नम्मुक चैप्टर क्लोज मुडिंबोकिंग निकिदुके नम्मुक एन्नल ताग्डीलेन, अंदर्थकु पोन वडने, अंदा प्रेसन्न में अभीए इलित्त तल्ली कुड्डुबै एन्गु सेट्रो बादलास्त्र तल्ली उड्डुको
So the Lord will not have time to discuss all sixty years issues with a person and therefore a person of God says that, when once a person goes to the presence of God, automatically the presence will give the judgment based on his life.
रम्बा कवनमा रुकनो
We should be very careful.
इबस समीप कालमाई इबडी पट्ट पोदगरलालम पुदुसन निचिरकांग, फुल स्पीडल वरांग
So recently, teachers like this have come up in full swing.
That means you're crucifying Lord Jesus Christ and you're putting him to open shame.
One Timothy chapter five verse eight. Dear Saint Paul talks about the falling away of faith.
So what does it mean by denying the faith? Taking medicine is just one portion of denying faith. So that is an experience of in sublime state.
So divine healing is a very important portion of the backbone of doctrine.
But there is something called as the foundation. And there is a foundation. So when we first deny faith. So taking medication and by denying faith is the last state.
One Timothy chapter five verse eight.
You have a wife, you have a husband, you have two or three or four children and you have a brother, sister, your parents, you have to inquire them. Why did not the child go to school? Why has the marks come down? So why is the girl blind? So why she's not going at the right time and coming back at the right time? So why he's not sleeping at the right time, why he's not waking up at the right time? Why is he despising the presence of God? Why he's not giving the importance to the works of God? Why he's not studying well? Why he's not doing his job well? So why is his countenance fallen? A father and mother should carefully watch this. You have to inquire. Son, what happened today? What has befallen you today? A king was looking at the servant who was pouring water and he said, why is your countenance fallen today? Please come down and he enquires. And what what did the husband of Anna say? What did he say? Why are you not eating? Why are you troubled? Did you not ask? What has happened to you? I am there for you. Why are you grieved? See very how clearly he speaks. So is the husband and wife talking like this today? So he has not had food today. Let him be like let him fast as staff for at least one day. So without eating, he's not gonna die. That is how the world is today. Your husband has come. Will you not serve food? No, he's having hands, isn't he? Let him eat. That is what is happening in every house today and that is why Pentecostal is standing in the middle of the street. How was the old in Pentecost? I'm not talking about Tamil Nadu. In Abraham's house, how was Sarah? Did he say hi Abraham? Today, that's what is happening in most of the houses. Have you spoken to your husband? He's a John. Yeah, I've spoken. I've spoken to John. It's only two months after the marriage. She is telling I was I have spoken to John but he's not speaking well. What did Sarah say unto Abraham? My lord. Is it not so? What did they call in Tamil Nadu? Stone or a grass, it is the husband. Today people, do they see that? If you wish to come, otherwise you just go your way. In church itself, we can witness how people's countenance change when they go by two wheeler. So recently I heard a news. The pastor spoke like this. So after the meeting is over, the husband asked the wife, do you have pastor's number? No. No, I have a doubt. What happened day before yesterday, the pastor is rituating as it is, then who has reported to him? No, you have got the number from someone and you has informed everything to him. So she said. He said, I've never heard God speaking like this. This is happening in Tamil Nadu. Have you enquired your family? Have you enquired your family this morning? You desire the law should inquire you. Is it not so? Work is of God must inquire. Relatives must inquire. Whom have you enquired this morning? So if a man provide not for his own house and especially for his own family, then he has denied the faith and is worse than an infidel. It is similar to denying God. Denying faith life it shows. You should speak. There might be griefs. There might be bitternesses. Immediately. You gotta settle all your problems before the sun goes down. That's what the Lord says. You have to pay attention. So by the by this desk, you have to settle your personal problems with all your spiritual problems, you have to settle before ten o'clock, before you go to bed. Because in my bed, I sought for my beloved. So in the same day, if you ask ten times pardon to God, that's okay. But you have to keep this mind, retain this mind of asking forgiveness. And there are certain saints who will say that you ask pardon from the Lord, do not ask from me. When they come and ask pardon to you, you should not speak like as though you are a brilliant excellent person. But when they say, you have to also say that because I spoke like this, you have reverted like this. The first person who asks pardon is humble. The person who asks pardon first is divine. The person who asks pardon first is gracious. Let him come and speak to me. Let's see. He will never come. Then what will you do? So you will again find fault with him saying that because he has committed the mistake. You have to inquire your family. You have to inquire your children. What is happening? Where have you gone? So you're not doing any job, then why are you? You have to answer the question that I asked. You're not going to church? You're not going to college? You're not going to church? So all these three places you're not visiting, but why are you dressing up like a bridegroom and you are just taking the vehicle, filling up fuel and roaming around? You have to either study. Or go to work. Or go to the presence of God. So if you do not go to these three places, you have to stay back on knees at home. Why are you going out? Why are you roaming around? So everyone has this problem. There are two or three in the house. So certain believers, even the head of the family, they do not go to work, but at the right time they will start, get ready and come out. Therefore, in the spiritual life, you have to inquire your own family. Second Timothy chapter three verse five. What is mentioned here? They put on the form of godliness but deny the power thereof. What is the form of godliness? Is it removing shaving of your moustache and beard and wearing white and white? Removing the ornaments? They are thinking that these are godliness. So therefore, all the MLAs, all the MPs, they are wearing white garments. It's called as the minister's white. Does it mean that everyone will go to Zion or Jerusalem? White and white is not holiness, it is just the base of holiness. In other words, we can say that that is a sign of victorious life. At the same time, wearing white and white, you should not deny the power thereof. Do not think that because you have removed the jewels, you will go to heaven. But you're removing the jewels, but you're fighting at home. You remove the moustache, but you are beating up your wife. I believe that you will understand the point that I'm making. Therefore, you have put on the form of godliness, but you have denied the power thereof. You have to run around and labor. You should not put on the form of godliness, rather put on the power of the godliness. You have to stand for divine healing. You've got to stand in the truth and doctrine. You should not deny the power thereof. That is why a few days back I. Job twenty nine. What he says? So he says that the days wherein the Lord blessed me or preserved me and the days of prosperity which the Lord has blessed me with, if it is there, that is fine. He was filled with mighty anointing. So but he says that he has three lives dead, then the godliness is in vain. At the same time, he is having all kind of riches, all kind of property and but still he does not have anointing, then there is no use in that. You should both have anointing as well as blessing. That is where the prophetical book of Isaiah is mentioned that upon your children, upon your descent, I will pour out my spirit as well as my blessing. Second Timothy chapter three. Verses from one to five is mentioned about opposed thirteen faults. So if you put on the form of godliness and having these faults within you, then you are denying the power thereof. Titus chapter one verse six. And there is confession but no works. A child of God naturally should make confession. But it should come in their action. Today, many do not have such a life. And one sixteen says. They profess that they know God. But in their works, they deny him. What kind of people they are? They are abominable. Disobedient. And unto every good work reprobate. See how clearly the word of God professes. So they can very easily say that I know God, I know pastor, I know the church, I know the word of God. These are very easy things that we can say. Perhaps during the past is because of fear or because of situations, you might have denied God. And there is another power for this denying. That is blessing. Is it not so? Sir, our believers, as long as they are normal, they are okay. When they earn about ten thousand rupees salary, they will come to the meeting regularly. But when the salary becomes one lakh, they are missing. Do you know how we pray? So we are praying that all the penury, all the poverty, all difficulties, all the problems and deaths of the people, it should be removed, our people should be blessed and prosperous according to your word, but once they are blessed, they are disappearing. That is why in Proverbs Solomon says. Chapter thirty verse nine. So lest I be full and deny saying, who is Lord? So if money abounds, that is a problem for our people. I met a believer. He was a very rich person. How can I say that? The government has taken away his property. Who's property? I will talk about this person. I've told about this person. Have I told you about this person? When I went to his house, it was a house, there was not even a map to sit down, but later on he conducted a convention itself. But later on, when the time came in about eight hundred acres of land that he possessed. The Lord gave him so much of wealth. So exorbitantly, he was blessed. He did not allocate it properly to his wife and children, but he has kept everything in Benami name and therefore he was he has lost, had to lose everything. Now his children have absolutely nothing. One day when I spoke to him. I was giving ideas saying you could have done like this and that. So he said, I was just keeping my mind under control that I should not go behind money. So he said, I have to go to the presence of God. That is more important for me. So even riches and wealth makes a person deny. So you can find so many examples, even I can talk about those people have gotten employment as well as marriage and they departed from the church. What does the Bible say? A person got married. A person purchased a. Now when they called, what they said? What did they say? With wedding, they disappear from the church. When you call them, they said, I just got married. I'm just busy. Another person said, I purchased a nox. Does it mean that when you purchase a nox, you should not come to the church? Are you milking through twenty-four hours? He has purchased about five buffaloes and he's not able to come to church, giving so many excuses and reasons. The Lord has given it as a sustenance for his for his family to run, but when the Lord blesses him with hundred oxen or buffaloes, what will happen? Other person purchased a piece of land. So will the land run away? I have to urgently go and visit the land. Do not fail, deny the presence of God, not giving importance to the presence of God. Weekly seven hours you have to set aside for the Lord. Morning, three hours. Morning, three hours for service. For two hours. Two hours for the tarrying meeting. Two hours for the Bible study. You have to do it properly. Because each and every one has different content. So in each and every meeting, there is separate life. He that forsake the assembling of the church is cursed. When you come to the assembling of the church, curse is automatically gone away. For where the spirit of God, there is liberty. When you come to a tarrying meeting, you get deliverance. He shall know the truth and the truth shall set you free. Therefore, when you come and know the truth, there is deliverance. You go to brother's prayer. What is there? Sir, how goodly and pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity, go to fasting prayers. If you go there, what happens? This kind of devil does not go out except for prayer and fasting. So you go to four o'clock. He that seeks early in the morning shall find me. Every morning his grace is new. You pray in one hour for the night times. Can't you not stay awake with Jesus? Watch and pray for one hour that you enter now in redemption. Therefore, each and every prayer. There is different life. That is what you have to do regularly. So if you do not do anything but you come only for Sunday morning service. So if they take you to heaven and leave for one day and the rest six days, they put you into hell with you, will it be okay? Is it not so? It's wrong. You got to offer the time to God. When you give the time to God, God will give his time to you. That is what the Bible says. And therefore, they have their work and therefore certain people deny God for this purpose. Deuteronomy twenty eight forty seven. So when you are in fullness. So you have to praise God and with joy and gladness you have to worship God, otherwise it will become a sickness. Deuteronomy twenty eight forty seven forty eight. So what a miserable condition you are pushed into. Therefore, the Lord is speaking to you. So whether you have little strength or most strength, that's not a problem. If you deny not. And the open gate is before you. And I will give you people. I will cause you to escape temptation. There is a crown for you. I will make you a pillar. So I will write my name upon you. And this is the promise given to whom? There is a promise which God gives to them that deny not. You have to understand this properly. So because you had little strength, yes, you did not deny my name. Because you have kept. I place before you and open. So I will give you the people who are in the hands of the clutches of the devil and enemies. So I will cause you to escape the temptation which will come upon the world. You have a crown. I will make you a pillar in my temple. I will write my name, the name of God on you. So let us all close our eyes. Today, you love God once again. Peter who denied and left God, he once again started loving him. You love your brethren. So you do not deny his name but keep his word. Let us all close our eyes. Three times after denying. And the cock crew. Immediately he came out. He ran out of the presence which denies. So the Bible says that whichever situation he would deny, he ran out of that place. So if you go to this place. In this place, another soldier. And there was another person. The scenario in such a situation, wherever he goes, he has to deny. But when the cock crew. Peter ran out of the place and because he denied, he cried bitterly. So this is the experience of him saying, making Jesus. Let us all close our eyes and. So perhaps in our life, due to situations, due to fear, because of so many things, truth, doctrine, the word of God and the work of God, the faith of God, we might have denied due to various reasons. So the 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 meaning of every failure, either outwardly or inwardly, the reason is denial. How many of you agree this? So every failure, every sin, every transgression is a sign of denying God. So do you know what I get? So three times after denial, who grew? So for the about one and a half, how was the cock was growing now? For hours together. You come out of the situation where you deny. One word. Just kneel down. Matthew twenty six twenty five. What is mentioned there? He came out. What does it mean? So if you stay in the same situation, you will stay in the same condition. Then the same damsel will come. And you're with her. And the person will come and say, you're with her. As long as you stay in the same place, you will keep on denying and you will die and perish. I don't know what the word of God say. So where he has come? So he came out of the environment from where he denied God. As long as you stay in that place, you will keep on denying. You leave the friendship. The place where you meet, do not go to the place again. The place where which is not the will of God, where you stand, where you sit and where you meet people, that is where the denial comes. You come out of the situation whereby you deny. Today, you're crying in the presence of God. Lord, I have denied you. Lord, I've cursed you. Lord, I swear saying I do not know you. What a dreadful treachery. Lord, I've become a traitor, Lord. Please pardon me. I ask you, Lord. You say, going forward, I will love you. Today, as you huff into these words. The Lord is going to give you a little strength. And because you didn't have the little strength, also you denied. By now, this anointing, a little strength is going to come into you whereby you will never deny again. I'll ask you a question. And the little strength which the law had given to Philadelphia, if he would give it today to me, until the death, until my last end, I will not deny God. Pray, please raise your hands. The Philadelphia church is not one person. There was a large multitude of people. But all the people had the little strength. And with the little strength, they stood firm for God. Lord, the little strength which you give to Philadelphia church, please give it to our Philadelphia church. Lord, please give it to me. Give to my wife, my husband, my children, Lord. Lord, give the little strength to our workers. Give that to our new souls to our church. Give that little strength to our young brothers and sisters in the church. People who are in backsliding or in rigid condition and weariness, give them the little strength, Lord. Now with the time, we have to receive the little strength. And here to send at the end.